... things not as well. And then in case they will lose them. There's others that I think is in there too. I think you're good.
Usually it doesn't go ahead of this.
It doesn't really know what came one of those other. But it's kind of much more. We'll put your log here over. Usually it goes through there and play that gear there. And then it, uh, cranes it down. I heard it got some. Yeah. And then we think you want to pull that over. You don't have a little bit more.
How do you do it?
Yeah. I'm gonna have to pull it off. They don't. Pieces of. There's gonna be enough. Just the first. I'll just file.
Never has been considered that very big. They have information on. I'm gonna present it.
For them. They know like. They're basically. They're very anxious. But in Oregon for this. We do not have cameras. So you guys can hear us. Or if you guys like cameras out there. That's not a good one.
I mean, you were resting that on this.
For that?
Uh, maybe a light.
Maybe up a couple of.
I don't think any.
Rest of.
Yeah. Kind of day that right. Uh, under any, uh, two year old Mario. There no V is about that. It's a case period.
If it had a lot of chat, I would. Um, to like.
And that's the same age gap that. There is a magic to not be in wise. It's a horrible time.
It's a terrible place. Yeah. Yeah. Traffic. That's about that. That's impressive. I sit up there. You met here? Bridge traffic? Yeah. Cook where they got a, on the line towards. Do it across that. That's what I'm. Let's call order to Belleville Board of Commissioners regular meeting on Monday, February twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three at six thirty P. M. We can stand the invitation and pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the cause of the Lord. We thank for the great blessing you have put upon us, Lord, this town and our people and the people throughout the world. We ask you to give us and guide us in the leadership of Belleville, Lord, and do the right thing for the citizens of our town. We ask you also to bless our first responders and our military and police and fire and rescue, watch over them, Lord, and take care of them. And we ask those guys that's most precious life. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Glad to see this big crowd. I'm not used to seeing that many people in order, especially on my, uh, Monday. We don't have what I call major on, but that's mine. It's nice to look at there and see people. If I could, if the commission would have our pages under item three approved, just end of, you'll have a chance to look at it because it has like six. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes, ayes. Thank you. Excuse me.
No, I'm sorry. Any questions?
I get in a hurry. Okay, so Mike, we've got two of our commissioners that have other obligations. They're out of state, uh, Commissioner Morgan and Mayor Prokotim. So if I could have a motion to excuse them tonight.
Some news.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes, ayes. Thank you all for that. We've already finished approval of the agenda. Uh, we'll move on now to four, the consent agenda. Consent agenda, all items on consent agenda considered routine to be enacted by one motion without discussion. If a member of the government requests discussion allowed, and I will be removed from the consent agenda considered acceptable. If y'all have an opportunity to look over consent agenda, uh, if you don't see any issues, could I have a make with section in its entirety? So, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes. Thank you all again. Moving now to five on the presentation, uh, we're gonna get an update on the riverwalk extension. When Gillo, the weather around the mail, uh, if you could come up further, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for being here. It's always a pleasure. I'm happy to have you, uh, on.
It is always a pleasure to be here. Ladies and gentlemen, the town of Belleville, uh, we have, uh, accomplished something that I was hoping to do, uh, all in conjunction with the riverwalk at Belleville. Uh, we were tasked to do a bath metric survey of the Brunswick River. And our task started with a simple request because of the fact that, uh, the park is moving into phase two and, uh, we needed to figure out a way that we could either refurbish or, uh, build a marina or extend, uh, the boat launch area and also work with the boardwalk to see if we can accommodate river traffic. And the image that you see up on the screen, what we did was we took, uh, a small John boat with a single beam sonar, uh, used its motor and a pulling motor to do transects every five hundred feet or so across the river. And that image shows the wiggly lines of the transects that we create. And there were over eighty thousand points accumulated for this work. And from those points, we created the map that you have in front of you. Uh, we did the survey first in, uh, an elevation datum called NADD eighty-eight. That's our survey datum for the state of North Carolina. It is also the elevation datum for any of the flood rate insurance mapping that's done for all the towns and, uh, all municipalities that have, uh, coastal and waterway, uh, conditions where flooding can happen. Uh, we also did it in, we converted it from NADD eighty-eight, uh, into the tidal gauge datum from the monument over at Wilmington on the Cape Fear River, uh, and transformed the data into mean lower low water, which is a tidal gauge elevation of zero. Uh, and that is used by both the Army Corps of Engineers and for camera permitting of any boat structure, uh, pier, uh, or launch, uh, when an individual needs, uh, or wants to create a boat pier for anything, as you see in the image, uh, for, uh, a boat launch or a boat ramp, uh, all the datum has to be surveyed and a permit made in mean lower low water using that elevation yet. Now, the unique thing is the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers does not consider the Brunswick River a navigable channel. And in such, they don't have information that they can use other than the piece of survey work for camera permits. So, uh, each site has a survey for them to build their fear and that. Uh, but this survey is basically covered two miles from the bridge, uh, at seventeen south, two miles to, uh, and only part of this map shows the entire bathometric survey. So, uh, with your permission, I'd like to present this to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and have them at least, uh, use the data to their liking, uh, as anything, uh, especially for, uh, the camera permit issues that the town will face with phase two of riverwalk. All of this information will be helpful for placing, uh, any kind of boat facility and course the boardwalk out in the water. So, uh, this took approximately nine months to complete, uh, and it was a labor of love to me because of the fact that, uh, this is something that I thought would be, uh, beneficial not only to Belleville, but to all the citizens of the state of North Carolina. Uh, and with that, the effort that my staff made to do this, it was rudimentary in the way that we approached it because we wanted to keep it simple. Uh, but that was the easiest way that we could accommodate all of this. We have this information that we're used for, uh, phase two, uh, the riverwalk and whatever else the town would like to use it for, uh, and make it available to anybody who wants to use it. Uh, and that pretty much sums up what we have, uh, for at least the Brunswick River part of the survey. We have, uh, when the town acquired property from NCTOT at the bridge maintenance facility, um, we extended the boundary survey and created a subdivision of the parcels for the North Carolina State EOT to transfer to the town of Belleville. Uh, and with that survey, we have boundary information. We have the wetlands identified all the way up to, uh, Old River Road. We also did, uh, the property survey and included wetlands and normal high water, which will be an environmental line that has implications for camera development. So, uh, we had a bit of a bump with the wetlands. They have been submitted to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer, uh, and hopefully a week or two, we will hear back from them that, uh, they agree with the delineation of the wetlands as, uh, we surveyed them that when we did the minor subdivision for the properties, all of that information is in that survey. We also have photographic information. There will be areas where we will need to gather just a little bit more, uh, once the design route is settled for, for. And with that, we've also done a few other projects for the town in twenty twenty-two. One of them being, uh, an analysis of, uh, possible civil war mounds for the area that is right up against Old River Road and River Road at that intersection. There's, it's kinda hidden from sight, but there's about a sixteen-foot tall mound of earth that was either raided away partially, uh, when they put Old River Road in. Uh, but there definitely is a raised area that, uh, could be or might be part of the revatment from the old fort that was in this area. Trying to figure out where that was is a very difficult thing, as you know, um, and I'm hoping that, uh, when you provide the map that you received recently for the areas of concern that, uh, were part of the revolutionary war, I'd love to go exploring for that as well because this area is ripe with history. But the good thing is that there is no longer a need for updating, um, the archaeological map, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct? So, um, all of those things are, are gathered here into this area for the park and it's been a joy to be able to present and do the work for the town of Belleville and, uh, I look forward to doing a lot more.
Well, we do. Appreciate all the work you've done over here on the western side of here. I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm gonna do, I think, working does probably change a little dynamic. When you go in there, uh, projects that we have going on, well, we do, and also we're talking, you know, it's very extensive. So, uh, I'm like you, I've got very interesting, uh, historical side. We found out over time, uh, Olden built so much of the building there even there in the Civil War, a lot of proof from in this area as well as they probably had three or four or five now through weapons guarding the river. Right here comes crossing into weapons. We'd be just up this way from where the road bend is now. On the Civil War, one of the first cemeteries of the Revolutionary War was also fought right in our park, off the river. And I just, I've got a copy of a map showing that location. I would love to look at and get of this very substantial. If you have the proof, that means we can get recognized at state investment level for a monument, a big sign, um, being a historical site, uh, which the battle itself, I even found the description of what took place, having first that was followed in. And another thing, you had two of the top generals that fought the Revolutionary War to serve under Washington. They ended up onto the land around where it's called, where this area is, and they joined each other, the Bowery Plantation and the Belleville Plantation. And both of these people called Belleville Plantation, which actually go back to the White House, they were for the Revolutionary War. But it divided up at the end of the World Seas, and there was land grants given to some of the top generals, what we have in that sort of thing, Smith and Almora. We've got the top generals in Revolutionary War, the governor of North Carolina. One of them happened also as the first Supreme Court Justice, as he said, on the U.S. Supreme Court. But a lot of history tied right here to this area. All of those beyond the land and everything does, uh, the foundation to those bridges belongs somewhere out there, as well as the gun placements that we use and where some of the Civil War and Revolutionary War about to fall. It'd be nice to be able to really identify those areas and get them recognized and registered if it really happened. And it's already documented, it ain't like we haven't proved it happened. We know it happened because of the history set in. But I'm looking forward to it.
Sir.
But thank you all, all that you've done, but we've got something else for you before you step down. And, uh, I've got a resolution here. Resolution, uh, spread, my appreciation, Olden Gillo's service and dedication to the town of Belleville for sixteen years. Uh, it's resolution twenty-three dash oh three. I forget the mission of red this, I'm gonna get motion to pass this.
Some news.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes, ayes. Resolution twenty-three dash oh three. And I'll, I'm gonna. Get that one. All of my good, that means, uh, resolution spreads appreciation to, uh, Olden Gillo for service and dedication to the town of Belleville for sixteen years, where Olden Gillo has assisted town of Belleville as a professional land surveyor since two thousand and six. And whereas Olden Gillo has supported the town in many surveying capacities, Mr. Gillo has been instrumental in helping us with the pile bill certification recordings, which not only certifies the length of the natural street, but will call for getting allocation and distribution of funds from the state. Whereas little performance has been characterized by excellence, and we appreciate all his work on surveying, unifying sites, personal property, boundaries, roads, and all projects that the town has been involved in over the past sixteen years. Whereas Olden's history with the town makes him one of the cornerstone, not on the track in our history, but moving us forward. Mr. Gillo currently works with, with, with Rattinell, is in the ceramics, groups, record, where a portion of has sixteen years of experience. Olden has been recently been involved in mapping our Belleville Riverwalk Park extension surveying with multi-use paths. Whereas Olden has dedicated many hours to revise the maps and surveying roads, mapping out our town, all in helping us design the trails for the Belleville Riverwalk Park. Wherever we need a surveyor, we may just do the call. Now therefore, it be resolved and immediately duly noticed and assembled by the Belleville Board of Commissioners, the town manager, town staff, to speak in our heart. Felt thanks and appreciation to Olden Gillo for his outstanding service, dedication to the town of Belleville for the past sixteen years, resolved this twenty-seventh day of February twenty twenty-three. Signed, Mayor Mike Allen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We really appreciate it a lot, sir.
Well, have a word to you, Lord. Thank you.
The whole thing is, I never hear Olden complain. He's the only man I know that I'm old comfortable with myself, and I don't mind going out in the woods and the crap. If he looks like he's, uh, you know, he's a pioneer, walks out there, nothing bothers, not too thick, not too wet, he does. And Olden, thank you for that. Because you have been a great asset for this town and our growth and what's happened here. And, uh, like you said, uh, we should've got a long way to go and a lot more for you to do. And I hope I'll be talking with you soon. Okay, any comments from the commissioners? Thank you for everything you do for the town. We appreciate it greatly. I think it's a great idea to share the mapping that you did with the Corps of Engineers, like I love. All of the students and people that come to our town. So, thank you. Okay, and, um.
Thank you.
You know.
No, I just wanted to.
Oh, okay.
Say thank you for that. And, uh, I certainly will, uh, for that to the folks that, uh, that be, uh, for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and anyone else you may meet who might help us with the, the riverwalk extension.
As you're gonna see, I think you're gonna understand a little bit later why even the work you already done, uh, gonna be a great aid while you're ready to take on.
Perfect.
Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on to five B, a presentation to Ms. Brenda Williams, our clerk, our deputy clerk of the town, and she will come up. Uh, it's, uh, resolution twenty-three dash oh four. And if I could have a, uh, motion on that, say that.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes, ayes. This is a resolution by the Belleville Board of Commissioners, my name is Brenda Williams, eighth work anniversary with appreciation and thanks. I know I got that tone, but I'm gonna hear you. I'll be geared, I'll be geared bad enough with some reason. The bad thing is that means I'm getting older.
I'm right there with you.
I don't think you'll praise everybody. Uh, Brenda's resolution by the Belleville Board of Commissioners, it's honored to be Brenda Williams' eighth work anniversary with appreciation and thanks. Brenda Williams began employment with the town of Belleville in February twenty fifteen, and we consider her an integral part of our team. Her talent, energy, and commitment have been important to our success, and whereas Brenda Williams has served the Ministry of Assistance, tax collector, deputy town clerk, permit specialist, reservation specialist, and finance clerk, and whereas Brenda Williams has collaborated business relationships with the town's vendors and contractors, attended and man boos the town events, assisted our town accountant with the daily posting, hosted the town's annual flu shot clinic, and dutifully worked as a liaison with Brunn County Handling and approved this, uh, certification of zoning compliance, the tip of the zone applicable for residents. Ms. Williams also meticulously scheduled the shelter, reservation, special events, and occasions surprises us by catering an event with collectible homemade food. President Board of Commissioners wishes to express sincere appreciation and thanks to Brenda for her longstanding commitment, and service to the resident businesses, owners in the Belleville community, and all she does for us. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Belleville Board of Commissioners that the mayor's commissioner, town manager, town staff here by congratulating Brenda Williams on eight years of dedicated service to the town, express our heartfelt thanks and appreciate her work in memory of her service, and encourage everyone to celebrate her success the twenty-seventh day of February twenty twenty-three. We have at least ten more left in here.
Thank you so much.
Be.
Thank you.
Oh.
There you go, guys. Thank you, Mary. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And I go ahead and make a motion to approve. Resolution twenty-three dash oh five. I appreciate that. All in favor? Uh, all opposed? Actually, we have, uh, uh, Joe Henson to come forth. Come on up, Joe, take a bow. It's been a long time, but we've been around this area and Joe, uh, people, my homeboy and I am. This is a resolution by the Belleville Board of Commissioners expressing sincere appreciation of the service of Joe Henson, Vice Chairman of ABC Board. Whereas Joe Henson was first appointed April of twenty-ten to serve on ABC Board, whereas Joe Henson has supported the town for thirteen years as both chairman, vice chairman of ABC Board. Homeowner Association President for the Glen Mill Neighborhood and a member of the Unity Group of North Brundes, which sponsored parades. Whereas Mr. Henson has been a willing and enthusiastic volunteer who has helped with the golf cart inspection program, town projects, litter sweep over the past several years. Whereas in his position on the ABC Board, Joe Henson serves the town of Belleville by handling responsible liquor sales at ABC stores, which generate income for the town, hiring and overseeing the employees that work at ABC stores, ensuring that the stores are run with exceptional customer service and keeping with the budget. Whereas the town of Belleville is very appreciative of all Mr. Henson's time spent on behalf of the town. We recognize him and thank him for his diligence and ten, tenacity. The town is fortunate to have someone with his experience and look forward to his continued service. And therefore, it be resolved that the Belleville Board of Commissioners, the town manager, and the town staff extend our heartfelt thanks and appreciation to Joe Henson for his outstanding service and dedication to the town of Belleville for the past thirteen years, resolved this twenty-seventh day of February twenty twenty-three. Signed, Mayor Mike Allen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. I love the round one, everybody.
It is a taking.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe's another one that, when he came to our town, and there's some times when we ask people to step up and take charge of things, Joe didn't hesitate. And that says about a lot about all the people we got here to work with the town of Belleville. Because when I first came in, I found out over, through time, and I'll make you sure, basically, town of Belleville was almost on its knees and about to go away. And over the past weeks, I have been finding out more of why that happened. But then that very thing that was trying to destroy the town has now turned around and has had an opposite effect by the leadership we have in the town now and the people that help us and all the capacities that we have here. If it had not been for the staff and people like Joe and our commissioners and people we have now, Belleville wouldn't exist. And in fact, when, uh, I stepped in and got on the count the first, first time, I didn't realize everything that happened to our town and how we had been so restrained from the potential to even grow. And our predecessors have pretty much ripped this town to pieces. At one time, our town. It's hard to make things happen when we've had restraints put on us that were on us when we came in here. But that ends this year. And, uh, that'll say your freedom at last. And, uh, so you're gonna see this town grow. You're gonna see some good things happen in the next two years. So I'm looking forward to it. Uh, me and my staff and all of us, we've been making a lot of trips to Raleigh, trying to get prepared for the opportunities we're gonna have in front of us. We want the town to grow some. We want to expand, we want something. One thing I want to be able to do before I leave here, I hope, is we'll have a downtown area, we'll have the restaurants, we're gonna be able to say Belleville may be small, may not be huge, but I don't need to have to drive a little thing. I can take care of whatever I want to do right here, and I think you're gonna see that. I think I'll see it my way. Now, one of the other things I think is bothering people, if you want to get out, and I'm touching just on it, is what moves on, is that infrastructure in our town and growth. Uh, the infrastructure part, our roads and traffic, people, we're gonna have a problem. It's gonna continue to be a problem. But I can promise you, we're chipping our way at it, but it's tough. We're going to get some big places to try to get funding here. Uh, you know, I sell on the WNP Boat Board, Transportation Board, as well as some of our county commissioners, the town of Leland, and, uh, we're in a fight to get funding, to get those road boats here to relieve traffic. You gotta remember, there's huge competition out there. It's tough. Of course, you gotta have enough boats to make things happen. Right now, we don't. But I hope that's gonna change, and stuff comes to you too. But because we are growing, we are getting more light on us in Raleigh, our leaders are seeing it. But these processes, they take a while. But most people, they don't understand, if we said we want to do a road project, it'd be five years before they make a decision to do it. Because all the preliminary work has to go into it. So as you, and money, a lot happened there in COVID, a lot of jobs pushed back, costs are going way up, a lot of projects are having to be shut down because the cost has increased a lot. I'm not talking about a couple thousand, I'm talking about billions. So, uh, people have to make decisions right now, even though they're wanting about doing away with jobs and projects, but you gotta take that funding and shift it to some of the other big major projects, so be patient. Uh, it's coming, it's gonna come at the speed you want it to, it's coming. And remember, and I want to tell all the people here, pick up the phone, call your representatives, it does make a difference. Really does. When I go to Raleigh, I hear my constituents, but you're calling. That's what I want to hear, is you're making phone calls. But why are we not getting roads here in our town, entertain them? Thank you for that. We're gonna be selling our officials, too. Uh, okay, we move on, I think that takes care of, um, why we move on to six, old business update on the Belleville Riverwalk project. About that, maybe we're gonna take that.
Okay.
Hey, on the park update, we're just about completed on the shelter renovation. Did the beautification on shelters, replaced all the needed wood on them, sanded and repainted all four shelters and all of that, um, did a lot of spring cleanup, getting all the leaves and stuff ready, and, um, been working on the dragonfly pond, which is the next one. Um, dragonfly pond is coming along, dug out, its line is filled, it's got rocks around it, it's got logs in it now, um, big rock in it, and I started planting today. Um, gonna take some time, it's not spring yet, so wait for spring to come along to get more plants. But, um, I'd like to thank Kent Goodman for giving us full sale on some nineteen plants that he got me. Um, I'd like to thank Bianchi, um, for giving us a discount on the rock that surrounds the pond as well, they gave us a big discount on the rock. Um, this, this is usual in the park, getting lots of visitors every day, and we're staying on topic.
And I'd like to give a problem, I'd like to prove, actually first, actually build dragonfly pond in the state.
Yeah. It was on the news today.
It is, it's the first. And, uh, and I told the fellow, we were talking about the project we got going on in our park, rebuilding and everything. When I came here, I asked my town manager one day why we want to work with the park trying to make it look better, and she said, we don't own the park, we need it to be camped. And she tells me the best thing we got in the town that we gave away, but I called the chair of county commissioners, and I told them that I want it back. But it took three months, and we got it back. It's been one of the greatest things that happened in our town, it's been by highlight of all those, it gives people a place to go and bring their families and enjoy themselves. We want to make it better, and, uh, ideas that the staff has come up, GM will just, you know, and I've worked here around ponds, you see dragonflies everywhere. Dragonflies eat mosquitoes, and you know there have to be mosquitoes around here when the weather's right. So they come, and after we come up this project, uh, and looking at it, we're gonna be, we have to be the first in the state to grow dragonflies, to have a natural theme to this active mosquito population in our area. I told Jim, the only thing I wanted out of me, I ain't sure we got a camera so you can get a picture of the dragonflies in the ladder.
We will be ordering them in, so, um, between March, the middle of March and April is our deadline on that. Um, so we're ordering from state and just Carolina, and we introduce them into our pond in April.
So if you get a chance, come down to our park, and, uh, go by, look at the pond, you can see it, as it's progressing, and I get, we're keeping it online as well.
Yeah, given what's on the face of the world.
We can keep up, they can say, oh, the dragonfly, come down, look at it, I think once it gets there, I'm real...
Yeah, storm construction.
Because I grew up around the wilderness, and, uh, you see a dragonfly at all times. I don't see one that's in here. Thank you, Jim.
Yeah.
We got somebody else.
For the national trip.
Yeah.
So, uh, I brought this up, as you guys know, back in the day, I think, a member up together, we talked to Joe about it. So we got, we finally got it live on February, February sixth. Um, so right now, we're sitting at twenty-nine people, um, as of today, uh, for this trip. Um, we got a couple back out for unforeseen reasons. Um, but, so we're at twenty-nine right now, um, and so, uh, March fifteenth is still, uh, the deadline of minimum, uh, which is thirty. Um, so I'm pretty sure we'll get to thirty, uh, in the next three weeks. Um, but, uh, we've been spreading the word, uh, so we're gonna get the word back out, uh, here coming up, uh, probably by tomorrow, uh, but this is a good trip. Um, I've had plenty of people call, um, and, uh, inquire about it, it's just that they called me back, um, want to register, um, but I think we had, uh, most of those twenty-nine so far were in the first seven days, seven or eight days. Um, and then we've had sporadically a couple more, uh, since, since that time. Um, I know we got it out, um, it is a good thing, there's been a good trial on getting it out, basically, a month and a half before the minimum deadline, so, um, luckily going forward, uh, and I'm pretty sure we'll get this trip, you know, going forward, we'll be able to get this out months in advance, instead of a month and a half or two, uh, in advance. Um, and so, but, uh, from what I've heard so far, from everybody who's, uh, signed up, they're looking forward to it. We have, uh, a lot of single passengers going, um, and so I was shocked by that. Uh, but yes, I mean, as of right now, we're looking good, um, so we'll spread it out. Um, I've been focusing mainly on Belleville and Leland, uh, preferably here. Um, I will talk and see if I want to distribute it out to the Wilmington Facebook groups and all that, but my goal is basically kind of get more Belleville residents, um, this community, our community here, um, before I send it out to everybody else. Um, but, uh, this is our website, I know most people haven't seen it, um, this was created for us, uh, and this is where we'll have all of our tour information, the itineraries on it. Um, it does have video on here of what you will do during, um, during your trips and everything. Um, so hopefully, this one, uh, does very well, uh, which I know it will, um, and then hopefully, we'll look forward to doing another one, um, hopefully in the fall or winter time. So, uh, but yes, I mean, it's been a good positive feedback so far for us, uh, and the more good thing about this program, it's, it's all benefits towards us, and it doesn't cross our region, um, so it's all profit for the town, um, to help us raise money for other adventures that we have going on, so, um, yeah, so that's our national show trip for our tours. Um, and then I'll follow up with one more thing that I brought up, so we also got the, the food truck radio coming up, uh, I told, I talked to Jim, so we actually have nine that signed up so far for that, uh, working on getting a couple of smarts for us, uh, and I'm about four or five food trucks short, but I'm working on getting the, in the next year, so hopefully we'll be able for that, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, um, and then we'll get the word out and get those sponsors on our flyers and do good enough, so.
Thank you, sir.
Very welcome.
Appreciate it. I know, uh, people are good, they'll enjoy that trip, I'll tell you. I've been to Nashville before, and you've been there, a lot of those. Okay, moving on to, uh, I guess we're gonna be street repairs, uh, drainage repairs.
And Jim, would you want to give a brief overview of the next street repair that we're gonna do?
Yeah, um, we have a little bit of power money left over, so Athena asked me to look at some roads that we serviced in, and we decided, um, we did part of the end of North Old Town that we have as a town, most of it's DOT, but it stops, it turns into ours, crosses over King's Worth, goes down to Jacob's Run. That whole second section has not been overlaid in a long time, and I fixed a lot of potholes on that road. So we decided to do there, we're trying to get a second estimate on that, um, we got a couple calls out, nobody's called me back yet, um, I did get one estimate already, so, um, that's our next plan, um, road repairs. Does anybody know of any other repairs that, uh, you guys have seen that you think needs attention in Old Town?
Y'all seen, just turning in.
Yeah, just let me know, um...
Well, we appreciate it, we're trying to, I'm glad that, you know, we're trying to take our power money, and if you don't spend it, you lose it. And, you know, it'd be a shame that we got repairs we need to do on our roads, and we're not using all that money, so go ahead and do the repairs, so we'll make sure we're on top of it. If anybody in the town, or if you find out, please let us know, and we'll go ahead and look at it and see if we get a project done off.
And then we're doing those speed bumps, um...
Yeah, we're putting up speed bumps, uh, also, hopefully there's no river road that hasn't been finished and everything, or backhoe road, so we're in the process of getting those in the town and taking them in and everything, and, uh, that's a good thing. And then hopefully we'll have full roads and rest of backhoe road done here in the near future.
Hopefully.
Yep.
Apple City.
It'll happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from staff on that zone, Jim, any comments from you?
No.
Have you heard anything on the water issue that they're all from, over there?
Not, uh, okay. Just sits there. On Gregory Road, uh, the drawing for the profile that we did along, uh, the ditches for, uh, Gregory Road leading up to, uh, Seventeen and the ditches on Seventeen, that's on my desk, I'll get that to you tomorrow.
Okay. Great, thank you. Okay, we move on to item seven, uh, parks and recreation board vacancy, and, uh, item town manager, town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, our chairman, Laura, this term is going to end soon, so is that a place that you allow us to advertise for that vacancy? And, uh, we will bring that back to you at the March meeting.
Okay, that'll be fine, and, um, without any issue from the commissioners, uh, we'll direct staff, go ahead and handle that, put that out.
And we'll do that with Harrington on the line.
Okay.
For the transportation update.
Okay.
Good evening, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful, well, as always, it's nice to, uh, be able to join you guys for the meetings, whether it's by phone or in person. And I did want to give you guys a transportation update with, um, yeah, some of the things that Mayor Allen was talking about earlier, um, with growth and everything that's obviously coming along, um, transportation update, um, should be able to help with that. So, um, as you guys have heard, um, so many times before, we've got the grant from the WPO to construct, um, it's technically a multi-use path down one thirty-three, but they will, um, tug each other, so it'll be one seamless multi-use path. And, um, our date is scheduled now is that, um, we are going to be able to start work in June, uh, in May, June, but we are hoping that, um, we're able to stay on, on that timeline, and so that's a multi-use path that will be under construction, and it does look like that it's about the exact same time. NC D O T is gonna be working on another project, uh, that will be the widening of NC one thirty-three, um, starting right there at town hall. So, quick overview on that, because obviously two sides to NC one thirty-three on the riverside, there is gonna be about an additional twenty feet of asphalt of new pavement to add an extra rain there. Uh, there's not gonna be curbing gutter on the riverside, um, and, um, when you get to Old River Road, it's actually not gonna be that extra twenty foot, it's gonna be about an additional five feet between Old River Road and, um, getting closer to the park, not part of the park. And then on the town hall side, there will be a multi-use path that will connect to the other two projects, um, can provide one multi-use path that will connect from town hall, um, all the way down, uh, to Wright's Run. And then there will also be a crosswalk, uh, right at town hall at Blackwell Road, so you'll be able to walk across the street, continue, um, walking on the sidewalk there. Um, and so it seems like these projects are actually gonna be under construction at about the same time. Uh, it's gonna look like one construction project, but they're certainly doing their project, uh, but it should result in some additional, um, capacity for, um, NC one thirty-three and, you know, the multi-use path will be in there as well. Um, any questions on all of that?
Well, we just want to thank you, Adrian, for all the hard work, and, uh, we thank you every day for being with us, and, uh, we're looking forward to these projects, and like you, sometimes I get a little frustrated because, uh, they keep pushing, they've pushed them back a couple of times, which, uh, I wish they hadn't done that, but...
It's gonna be about an additional five feet between Old River Road and, um, getting closer to the park, not part of the park. And then on the town hall side, there will be a multi-use path that will connect to the other two projects. Um, can provide one multi-use path that will connect from town hall, um, all the way down, uh, to Wrightsburg Run. And then there will also be a crosswalk, uh, right at town hall at Blackwell Road. So you'll be able to walk across the street, continue, um, walking on the sidewalk there. Um, and so it seems like these projects are actually gonna be under construction at about the same time. Uh, it's gonna look like one construction project, but they're certainly doing their project. Uh, but it should result in some additional, um, capacity for, um, NC 133 and, you know, the multi-use path will be in there as well. Um, any questions on all of that?
Well, we just want to thank you, Adrian, for all the hard work and, uh, we thank you every day for being with us. Um, we're looking forward to these projects. Like you, sometimes I get a little frustrated because, uh, they keep pushing, they pushed them back a couple of times, which, uh, I wish they hadn't done that, but in the long run, maybe that follows.
That may be. And I do also have a, another piece of, uh, this would be a piece of business as well. Um, it was back in January that the, um, Williston NPO, our regional face, state planning, uh, group, they submitted an application to NC DFT for a trail feasibility study. And, uh, they submitted the application for the Dolaghee Cultural Heritage Trail. And, uh, you know, you guys submitted a resolution of support for the grant application. Um, and it's really going to be a, um, a team going into this to the Dolaghee Cultural Heritage Trail as well. It's huge, it spans over multiple states. But the purpose of this feasibility study is gonna look at, it's gonna be from, go from the Vasa, Leland, Belleville, and then it's gonna go to the edge of the WQ's plain and boundaries, a little bit further south on 133, actually in front of town. So, um, the mission is all that. And immediately did award, um, the WPO with those funds to do that trail feasibility study. So the point of that study will be, you know, to determine where exactly that Dolaghee Cultural Heritage Trail will, will go. You know, they may say, you know, there may be an area in the Vasa where it could be on this road or it could be that road. But really figuring out, looking at how complicated engineering is, the confidence in it, and, you know, theories and other, you know, factors that are going to invite a way to create a go, it will really finalize where that alignment should be. And that really makes the whole project one step closer to construction. So it'll probably be about a year or so, um, that the feasibility study will be going on. And of course, I will be proposing about that all along the way. Um, you know, I will say the reason as a whole is pretty exciting about this one because there's been, you know, a lot of talk about this lately. So, you know, being able to pull together this document that's really going to, you know, get really this updated confidence in it and really set this project up for construction. And I will say I just love that these multi-use paths are also going to be on this expectation as those feasibility studies are being done. So I think, uh, you know, that's really gonna put a nice spotlight on the town of Belleville for all of their efforts. Uh, while this is going on at the same time.
Well, Chris, thank you so much, Adrian, for that update. And, uh, we'll look forward to a lot more that's hopefully coming up this year. I think this year is key year for us.
Yeah, I'll agree with you. I think this year's gonna be this year.
Well, thank you, Adrian.
Thank you. You guys have a good evening.
Okay, thank you. Like I say, there's a lot going on, uh, not only over here in our town, but have three projects that's gonna tie in. Like I say, we're having now you'll be able to get on the path, connects to Leland, the Walk Nolly Path, which now would at least go all the way down Wrightsburg. As well as, uh, the road will be widened from this spotlight down to the path where you turn back to build DOT. And I'll widen that out. Now, the rest of what we'd like to see is four lane and all the way down the path, uh, development. But that's not gonna happen because that keeps pressing to make that happen. One, the cost will be huge, uh, there'll be a lot of environmental impact because there's not a lot of easement on the 133 highway. And if they do what they want to do to that, that means this will be home, it'll have to be bought along that corridor. So it's not gonna be a short term deal. But we got, like I say, we do have some good things to do. And I think I will have some good news for everybody, uh, probably before the end of this coming month, March. Uh, you're gonna see some, uh, good things getting ready to happen. Um, one thing my commission didn't bring up, we didn't have, uh, we didn't have public comment section. But we'll go ahead and since we don't have anybody who wants to have a public comment section. But if anybody here would like to make any public comment, we'll be happy to open it up, like you said, a few words. Nobody didn't sign up. So if not, uh, we'll move on with the agenda.
Tonight, I'd like to ask the question about, you said that there is a plan to widen 133?
Yes.
How far is that?
It's only gonna be, it's only gonna be widened from, it'll be widened from here to our stoplight down before you get to the school.
I mean, the future.
I had a discussion, and just remember that, this is a discussion, no concrete or anything. I sat down with the district head of DOT.
Uh-huh.
And also what I feel if I sit on the WPO board, transportation board. Uh, 133 is coming back on their scope. But there's a process that has to happen, uh, which they prioritize where 133 would fit in the scheme of the whole state. But at least by them agreeing to put it back in the, at least the window, we can push it and hope that I can get my neighbors next door. Since we have assisted them on a lot of projects, that we can get them to push. Because we real, really need some pilots back on highway 133. So we're gonna push hard to make that happen. Uh, at least, short-term, at least get off of there when we come up to the light. We're gonna have additional space to come up and get in and work with. And I hope to love my whole life.
Well, one other question, how many cars are expected to come from this, uh, urban complex onto the road?
Are you talking about the human that's doing or the one that comes up?
The one that's, that's being built now, right down the street.
Yeah, that's only, we're looking at only about a hundred and sixty units. So you're not looking at a huge input of traffic out of that park. A lot of people are not local, eight or one, two, twelve hundred, I said, where, where would that come? That is not a big development. So I don't look for that traffic coming out of there to be much of an impact. And the way DOT is working with the developer, the impact coming off the road is gonna be very minimal as far as, uh, dealing with the track that's already on it. They, they build in social media, a lot of these, the traffic come down and get off, and also a lot of these factors back into the. Well, uh, in reality, I don't think you're gonna see that much of an impact, yes ma'am.
Um, I just was, was interested in, um, the DFC when they repaged Seventeen. Um, it looked like they, when they painted the lines, it looked like it's just spray painted. Are they gonna come back and do it better?
Yes ma'am. They are gonna come back and redo all over line. So have a little bit of patience, uh, they, I can't remember, they explained to them why that happened. Yes, but, but they are gonna come back and repaint it. You'll have pretty solid lines. But I'm like y'all, it's dark, it's raining, you can't see them. But for everybody that lives on 133, I wish I could say there's a magic field that we can cast and that instructing road will be large, but it's not. There is a process that has to happen. But at the same time, I tell the public, you gotta get on the phone to leaders in Raleigh and the DOT. But the more, uh, still the old saying is, it's too good. The squeaker wheel gets a lot of attention. You gotta keep it in the limelight. I can sit on the board and I sit there and all the screens, which we do every time we're there, about how we need to leave over here or in a stroke, but they need to leave also. Raleigh does, Charlotte, Ashland, Durham, and, uh, everybody's growing in North Carolina right now, so they, uh, and the cost. I'm gonna be honest with y'all, I have been really been shocked with the increase of how massive the cost of doing businesses going up. They huge projects that have been shut down because the cost of running so much. They gotta take that money shift into other major projects, so it'll be fun. And, uh, so they, the state's getting a grip on that, but our legislative body this year, I think we don't really be looking good. I think the council making this way increases the ability for DOT to get more funding. But then what we have to do is find a way here, our people, to get our projects in there. And, uh, we gotta start working on, so, you know, it takes time. A lot that goes into it, with the first, with the ground. Like I say, I remember one 133 when you had hardly no traffic. And now, uh, I'm like y'all, I have to come back and do it every day. I see it every day. You have to figure out, well, what times I want to try to get on the road, or I, but I know, can I take back the way you sound? Stay off road. But believe, you're starting to get a lot more attention than it has in the last few months. At one time, they could get, they could talk about 133, and that are talking. That's a good sign. But we need you and other people like you to start picking up the phone and making phone calls.
Well, I, I don't know if I want it to get so big. I don't know if I want it to be a four-lane road. That's kind of scary.
The whole, in the scheme of things, I think you're gonna see things, probably the next few years, it's gonna be one thing. It's like anything that grows fast. It only grows fast for a certain amount of time. The economy's changing, a lot of people leaving us, all coming down, a lot that happened here COVID. A lot of things that happened, you see, uh, I think that's just dynamics taking place right now. It'll be a little bit slow now, but we'll do it. I think that'll be fueled by, you're gonna be able to catch up and build on the industry, which is what we're already down. We'll keep looking at that, watching it, keep everybody informed. Call your legislators, please, let them know that you're concerned. If you beat up on us, uh, we don't generate the money that'll build that industry. But if you help us out, we can help push it and get it, get it in there. Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions? If not, uh, we'll go on to, uh, I made on the agenda, both sessions. Uh, on the North Carolina General Sessions, 143 dash 318 dash 1183, control of this attorney's litigation. And North Carolina General Sessions, 143 dash 318 dash 1184, we'll discuss my latest location, expansion of industries within our area. If y'all would like to wait, uh, this will be very short, and I'll back out. Just, uh, keep you within the, without much of a, much of a doubt. That's what we've done.